All right. Well, welcome all to the Brisbane City Council meeting of May 18th. We'll start out with a report out from -- oh, I'm sorry. We had our closed session beforehand and yes, we'll start out with a report out from our closed session.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the council had a liability claim that discussed in closed session.
Take your microphones on, Mike.
Okay. Sorry, it wasn't close enough. The council had a liability claim on for consideration and voted unanimously to reject the claim of Chase Wagner. The council also had a discussion regarding potential litigation and the council gave direction to proceed with that litigation.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Item four, adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oral communications, number one. So I have two slips. The first is Dana Dilworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I wanted to talk about something that I think is an impropriety and kind of ask why council doesn't respond to public inquiries. And I'm a little concerned about things that come from subcommittees and go straight to the consent calendar, or at least that's my perception of what has happened on a few occasions. And the specific example is last council meeting, item G, and the discussion of legal services with Danny Wooliver and Kelly. It seemed to me that we have a council member here with a family member that's on a different board and that while the discussion was fine, voting on it to me seemed to be totally inappropriate and that a particular council member should have recused himself from that discussion. And, you know, frankly, it's something that should be discussed before going on a consent calendar openly. And the fact that I'm a school teacher, work in school districts, I've seen school districts that are large, school districts that are small, school districts that self-implode, you know, there really can be a greater public conversation about the issue. The other impropriety I, to me, believe exists are trips to China. I noticed there's some on the mayor council matter. I don't know, is this another trip? Is it the recorder, the information that we requested from the previous trip? Really not sufficient information in the council agenda to even have a clue what's going on. And, you know, about the trips, I'm wondering where is this in our general plan that it says that we're going to foreign countries to consider trade? And then if it is, if we do have a collective idea that we need to go to foreign countries, why aren't we considering places, and I've said this before, like Denmark because they're 42 percent renewable energy, Costa Rica for using fuel taxes and energy fees to support their habitat protection? Those are the places that if I were on a committee saying, yes, please go to these places and learn, learn for us, bring back some information, but I certainly don't understand repeated trips to China. And regarding not responding to citizens, on May 9th, I inquired about the surcharging or the operations that continue to go on the baylands. And in particular, I observed that it was raining and they were still grading away. And so I inquired when the discussion of that contract is coming up. And to this day, so that was February, March, April, May, June's coming, when are we going to get some information and when will we look at the impacts of what is going on in the dump area? I find this really difficult to sit back and lose our views of the bay because somebody, you know, I don't know, where is the status of that contract? Because to me, it seems like that public interest is not being looked at and I would like some responses to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Michael Barnes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident and I have a complaint about Public Works. Just kidding, just kidding, I'm sorry.
Wrong meeting.
I just wanted to read a little bit out of the history book for Brisbane because I think it pertains to where we find ourselves today. Back in 1963, the company that wound up becoming Recology applied for a permit to dump trash out at Sierra Point. And the trade offer at Brisbane was that they would give Brisbane $30,000 a year and with fees over time, that contract would give the city about $1.5 million. John Turner, Jim Williams, and Jess Salmon were the three council members who voted for the contract and Ernie Conway and Ed Schwindeloff were the two who opposed the contract. At the time, Jess Salmon said that the dumpers were willing to pay us $30,000 a year willingly. They were filling the land and making very valuable real estate at the same time. But there was opposition to the dump in Brisbane and that was just the first skirmish in this battle. Then in 1964, Dr. Gardino, who was the first resident doctor in town and who I believe delivered one of the council members, sitting on the council today, he felt it was time that the community tried to create a new image. He said Brisbane is being thought of as being poor and needing the money from the dump. You want to get away from this psychology of poverty. And I think that that might apply today as well. He opposed the dumping of trash out at Sierra Point. And then in August 1964, the city council voted again, it overruled the planning commission and voted three to two to approve a 25-year contract with Sanitary Phil for dumping trash out at Sierra Point. Again, it was Williams, Turner, and Salmon who were the three council members in favor of dumping garbage and Schwindeloff and Conway were opposed. Then in 1967, Sanitary Phil, working through a former mayor, Jim Williams, offered Brisbane $100,000 a year to dump garbage out at Sierra Point. And at that time, the city was facing a budgetary crisis, which was made worse by the legal fees that the city was paying to combat the Sierra Point dumping litigation. Williams argued that if Brisbane did not take this higher-paying contract, it would either have to raise taxes again or drastically cut back its police and fire services. Again, it was another tempestuous meeting and it was three to two and it was Jess Salmon, McLennan, and With voted for the garbage and Bell and Schwindeloff were against. In this meeting, former council member Ernie Conway was physically ejected from the meeting because of the vehemence with which he protested the decision to put the garbage back on the ballot. So it strikes me that today, we're repeating our history. Back in the 60s, the city also derived a great deal of revenue from the quarry truck hauling fees and using city streets to haul dirt across Brisbane, just like we are today with the dumping out of the baylands, we get truck hauling fees from that. And I'm sure you're going to approve the taxing of the additional garbage reclamation that happens out of Recology tonight and also probably the pipeline where the city seems to me to be predicating its financial security on these dubious revenue sources, the kind of thing that I really don't want the city to be dependent upon. I'd rather the city council work to approve a baylands project that's based on science and technology and gives us a cleaner future. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Evil?
I just wanted to ask that you please move one of the items under council and committee members, Lori's trip, I guess recent, 2017 it says, to China, from the very end of the agenda up earlier into the agenda because I think some of the public is interested in that and I don't think we should be waiting to the very end. That's all I had came up to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more slips. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. So we've had a request to move something on the agenda, but we've already covered the meeting where we, the part of the meeting where we do the agenda. So what's the council's pleasure on moving up the item that was requested?
Leave it up to you, Madam Mayor.
I wouldn't see a problem moving it before the consent calendar and after the presentations.
I agree. That sounds good. Okay?
I'm okay with it.
All right. We'll move it up to after presentations before the consent calendar. And next we go to presentations by the Public Works Department on Public Works Week. And it's great to see the Public Works Department here. Thank you for all your service.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. This is that time of year when we come together and we celebrate National Public Works Week and in particular, we recognize all the efforts of your staff and all of the work they put in to design, to construct, to operate, maintain your water systems, your sewer systems, your storm drain systems, your roadways, to maintain your buildings, to maintain your parks, to maintain your marina. And the piece that we always come back to, it seems this time of year, is that notwithstanding the lime-yellow-green and the fluorescent-orange uniforms that they wear, they always seem to toil a little bit in anonymity. But I'm happy to report this year that it seems that that's been caught on at the highest levels, if you would. Hollywood is actually going to make a movie about infrastructure and we have the trailer here, excuse me, we have the trailer for you this evening. And so without any other introduction, I'd ask the clerk to dim the lights and to show that trailer for you.
Get back to us. Look, the lack of political urgency in tackling this problem is insane.
It's in sign language.
And you cannot tell me that you are not interested in this because every summer, people flock to see our infrastructure threatened by terrorists or aliens. But we should care just as much when it's under threat from the inevitable passage of time. The problem is, no one has made a blockbuster movie about the importance of routine maintenance and repair. Or they hadn't, until now.
(Inaudible) where a few feet of concrete can mean the difference between life and death, where everything you love can be taken from you in the blink of an eye. A few brave souls are willing to risk everything to make nothing happen.
It's time. For your biennial bridge inspection. I've got Thursday afternoon or Friday anytime before three.
This summer, get ready for infrastructure. Brace yourself for 98 heart-pounding minutes of incremental maintenance.
I'm not showing any cracking, no delamination, no spalls on the concrete deck.
But you got mild corrosion on the beams. You're gonna have to keep an eye on that.
Thank you, sir.
Don't get cocky.
The New York Times calls infrastructure necessary and something I never thought about, but yeah, sure.
Jesus, God, behind you.
Savage, this thing is gonna blow. 15 or 20 years, which is why it's so important that we caught it early.
In this line of work, one mistake could be catastrophic.
It's loose, boss. The bolt is loose.
Well, then tighten it, goddammit.
I don't know which way.
Okay, listen to me, listen to me, listen to me. Lefty loosey, righty tighty. Talk to me, what's going on?
It's good.
Rolling Stone says, nothing happens, and that's probably for the best.
I came here to chew bubble gum and inspect bridges.
You want to see terrible puns about engineering you don't fully understand?
Looks like somebody needs to get their ducts in a row.
You want to see 20-minute monologues on the structural integrity of girders?
I'm ordering uniaxial tests of the slab transverse to the deck corrugations with additional reinforcement and tension tests of the support, fastener connections between the deck and the girders, bitch.
You want more thrilling routine maintenance than you can handle?
They used PVC piping when they should have used CPVC piping.
God help us.
You want to see infrastructure, featuring an all-star cast, plus two-time Academy Award nominee Edward Norton, sorry, three-time Academy Award nominee Edward Norton. And introducing, as the chief, Steve Buscemi.
I'm the best damn inspector in the business and I'm here to inspect us damn.
Coming summer 2015, infrastructure, if anything exciting happens, we've done it well.
Close it, sandwich? Of course.
I guess you orville damn wasn't part of that, huh?
Yeah, probably, it was probably a little untimely on that, so that's not going to be out to the movies anytime soon. It's obviously a bit, if you want to see the rest of it, I think there's about a 15 or so-long minute soliloquy that John Oliver does in advance of it. So I think I found it on YouTube. If you just type in the search bar, John Oliver Infrastructure, you'll find it, it's worth it. But on a serious note, I'm no longer kidding, I'm no longer just playing here. That is an ongoing issue about how do we continue to recognize these folks and the efforts they do. So at a county-wide level, the Public Works Directors all got together and we thought, you know, maybe we need to come up with a motto, maybe we need to come up with a slogan for Public Works. And we did and we decided that we ought to come up with a slogan. It was actually last year's slogan for Public Works Week was "Public Works Always There." It represents the fact that we are always out there, we're always trying to maintain the roadways and we are always, every day out there checking all of our utility systems and we're always on call going out and doing those things. And to facilitate that, we went ahead and we ordered a bunch of orange wristbands that say "Public Works Always There." So what we'd like to do to start this off, and you all are going to be the first people in the county to receive these, I know that because I passed out the rest of them to my colleagues today at lunch and they haven't had the chance yet to ask them out. We'd like to give everybody in the room a "Public Works Always There" bracelet so you can remember we're always there. So Dustin, if you'll help me out with the audience?
Thank you.
Go Giants.
The perk for coming to the council meeting.
You gotta get a perk for coming to a council meeting.
Can I get two? It won't fit.
Have to double it up.
Yeah.
And put it on his finger.
It works, okay.
It's gonna cut off the circulation.
Yeah, if your hand starts twiddling.
Pretty close, though.
The tourniquet.
It dropped down, like you, Jerry.
Your Syracuse ties, too. I know, I've seen that Syracuse tie, there's a lot of orange in it.
Thank you.
So now that I've turned your meeting into a total disarray, I completely apologize that, but before I leave, what I'd like to do is maybe we get the Public Works staff to stand up and we could give them all a round of applause.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
And you get a raise later on in the agenda.
Okay.
It's true.
Well, thank you all and we really all do appreciate the work that you do. We know that you're always behind the scenes and that you're always there when danger strikes. So now we'll move on to the Police Department's purchase of body-worn cameras.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where's your camera?
We haven't gotten the money.
We're here for. You gotta have a display.
You'll get a video, but it's nothing like what you just saw. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Tonight I'm here to talk to you about an item contained in the mid-year budget and that's the purchase of body-worn cameras. The Brisbane Police Department has employed the use of in-car videos for over 10 years. In 2015, you approved the purchase of a new in-car video system as part of our normal capital improvement schedule. During this time, we also began to see the positive impact that body-worn cameras was having on documenting police conduct and promoting transparency by law enforcement. It became our goal at that time to incorporate body-worn cameras in the near future. The system we purchased in 2015 is manufactured by WatchGuard. One criterion searching for a new in-car video system in 2015 was to attempt to find one that incorporated the body-worn camera system as part of the in-car video system. WatchGuard was the only company in the process of developing this type of platform and I believe they still are the only company that offers this product. This product became available last year. There are many advantages to having the body-worn camera integrated with the in-car system and some of those advantages are being able to store and manage videos in only one system, having the body-worn camera videos synced with all other cameras associated with that patrol unit, and the automatic activation of the body-worn camera when the vehicle camera is activated and vice versa. The integration of body-worn cameras will not effectively change how the officers operate in the field. Currently, our policy dictates that situations where officers should activate their in-car video system regardless if they're in camera shot in order to capture audio if nothing else. So what we're doing here is simply adding the video component to what we already do on patrol. However, these new body-worn cameras can also be used by individuals not assigned to patrol vehicle, so the detective, the school resource officer, the motor officers, and the SWAT members will all be issued body-worn cameras as well. Coincidentally, the 2015-2016 San Mateo County Grand Jury issued a report calling for every agency in the county to purchase body-worn cameras. We concur with their findings regarding the benefits of body-worn cameras by law enforcement and a copy of that report's attached to your general report. Just to give everybody an idea of what type of images these cameras will provide, a short video for you to watch, in this video, you're going to see a comparison of WatchGuard's product with one of their competitors. Please take note of the difference in quality of both the audio and the video between WatchGuard and their competitor's video. This is just about a minute long.
Hello. Hi.
She was like right here. I wasn't sure she was pushed over or what, so I stopped. People were just passing her up. So I got out, I'm not like that at all.
I appreciate that.
So she was, I don't know if she was drunk or not, but she was just not very. So I helped her up, she was gonna put her shoes on, so I helped her put her shoes on and then she started walking. I was like, whoa, sit back down.
Did you want to call them?
I didn't call them, no matter.
Hold on, we want to check her phone. Hang on just a second. Is that okay? Do you have time?
No question.
Can we run down here and see if anybody's home?
Yeah, I'll stay with her.
First already?
Yeah, we were gonna tell you guys.
I just ran her and she doesn't have a driver's license or anything, so she's never had one. That might be a clue to something, you know?
He was gonna run by our house and see if anybody's there.
She says she lives with her mom.
And I'll stay with you guys.
So in conclusion, the mid-year budget proposal contains funding for both body-worn cameras as well as a backup storage solution for the WatchGuard system. Once funded, we plan on deploying, purchasing and deploying the cameras as soon as possible. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I like the idea. I know our officers actually do an outstanding job and, but I know we've had a few incidents that have always been challenged, that happens with every police department, you know. So I think this would, you know, definitely help alleviate it from, you know, being challenged, you know, that he said, she said, you know, the type of thing. But how long are the body-worn cameras good for? What's, you know, the life of it? Like five years, two years, three years?
You know, I would expect to get at least five years. With technology, your expectations are often greater than reality, the way technology rolls, but, you know, I would hope we'd get five or 10 years. We got that out of our first in-car video system and so I would expect to get five to 10 years out of this.
Yeah. And thanks for reattaching the grand jury report. I mean, I remember we read that a few months back, so, you know, it's always good to reiterate that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for, you know, wanting to do this. I think, you know, increasing accountability and transparency in anything is a good thing and when you embrace it, I think you're a leader. And our police department has always, you know, been right up there as being a prime example of how law enforcement should be administered in a public setting. I have a couple of questions. How often will the cameras be on when officers are on duty? Is it as soon as they are on their shift, it gets turned on or only when they go outside the station?
I mean, the cameras are always on and operational, it's whether or not they're going to be tagging videos to be saved on the server. So we do have policy, we've had policy regarding the in-car video system and the body-worn camera policy mirrors that. Like I said, we're kind of just adding the video component to what we already do. So the officers are expected to turn on or tag videos anytime they feel that it would be worthy of a video to be saved. And the policy, I have it highlighted here as well. There's, they break it down into four relatively simple terms. All enforcement investigative contacts, including stops and field interview situations, traffic stops but not limited to traffic violations, stranded motorists, and all crime interdiction stops, self-initiated activity in which a member would normally notify dispatch and any other conduct that becomes adversarial after the initial contact in a situation that would not otherwise require recording. So it's quite a bit of activations.
Sure, no, that makes sense. And then, you know, access to the video, is that, what, how does that go about? I mean, do public, like say someone gets pulled over and they've been recorded, do they have the ability to see that video?
and any other conduct that becomes adversarial after the initial contact in a situation that would not otherwise require recording. So it's quite a bit of activations.
Sure. No, that makes sense. And then, you know, access to the video, is that, how does that go about? I mean, do public, like say someone gets pulled over and they've been recorded, do they have the ability to see that video?
I believe they do. We still, as we get the cameras and deploy them, we'll be going through some of the fine points on how we deal with providing public access. That's one of the challenges many agencies are finding is the amount of public access that's being requested, and that's quite a challenge for them. We're currently working with the city attorney on refining that part of, and that's a records aspect, not really the body worn camera deployment aspect. That's a records function, Public Records Act, et cetera. So we're in the process of updating that policy to be able to address the issues of body worn camera videos.
All right, great. Yeah, you know, once that gets settled, yeah, it'd be nice to bring that information back to the council.
And here's, Bob covered it all. I was just going to mention, it all falls under the Public Records Act, and Michael's been really great at working with us with all the changes in laws, so what, you know, working also with our records division on what is releasable and what is not, so.
Yeah, I know it's new territory, so.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Terry, any questions?
No, thank you.
So I had a follow-up question to Cliff. So how long does the video get stored on the server?
That's one of the challenges, is storing videos. Now, this has become a challenge for everybody, but because of a new law a couple of few years ago, as you know, we upgraded our city surveillance system for this very reason, but the minimum is one year. And that includes even an accidental activation of the camera. There's no way to get rid of those. So it's a minimum of one year, and then certain other classifications would be longer, you know, three years for felony crime, or there'll be some instances where we feel that we need to keep it indefinitely, or anytime there are potential litigation. But it's a minimum of one year, and then it scales out from there depending on the type of situation.
Okay, thank you. And are you planning on getting them for all the officers?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, I'm also supportive of this, and I'm glad to see that the police department is following the recommendation by the civil jury, and I think it will just, you know, show more transparency, and I'm confident that our police department is absolutely doing everything, you know, according to the proper procedures. So thank you for the information.
Great, thank you. And I think by November, as the grand jury report indicated, I think by November of this year, every agency in San Mateo County, I think there's only one agency will not have body cams, but every other agency will.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so next, we're going to move on to the report by myself regarding the Silicon Valley 2017 Mayor's China trip. So happy to report on this. I had the opportunity to be invited to attend a trip to China. It was by one of the organizations that I went with last year. It's called China Silicon Valley, and they led a tour this year to the city of Chengdu, which is in southwest China. And just by way of background, each year, China Silicon Valley leads two trips per year where they invite mayors or vice mayors from cities throughout the Bay Area to attend conferences in China. And at these conferences, then we get connected to local businesses as well as have meetings with local government officials in China. And the purpose of China Silicon Valley, which has been around since 2011, is basically twofold. Number one, they help Bay Area businesses that want to expand their operations into China, and they also help Chinese businesses that want to do business in the United States or other countries, or establish a business location, in our case, in the Bay Area, to be able to connect those businesses through the government leaders here to the local businesses. So since 2011, China Silicon Valley has led almost 50 mayors or vice mayors on trips to China, and also, some of those trips have included business leaders from the Bay Area, and there have been over 100 business leaders that have gone on these trips. And when these trips occur, what usually happens is, in response, is that the government leaders in China then plan return visits to the cities in the United States or other places that they've visited. And for China Silicon Valley, it's resulted in about once a month, return delegations coming from China to the Bay Area, and then they meet with the local businesses and the elected people here, some of the people that they had met with on the trips in China. And so this time, it was the, it was called the Global Innovation and Entrepreneurship Conference, and at that conference, there were over 47 countries that were represented. And there were some ceremonies where cities entered into what are called friendship or sister city relationships, and that's really important in China because Chinese, the way they do business is they like to have what's called a sister friendship city relationship. That happens throughout the world, but it's especially important in China because they want to establish that personal connection. And so the city we visited, Chengdu, has sister city or friendship city relationships with 77 other cities. And we obviously do not yet have a relationship with them, but it's possible that they may reach out to us and ask us if we're interested in becoming a friendship city or a sister city, which doesn't entail any obligation financially, or, you know, it doesn't mean that we can only be a sister or friendship city to them. I think we have that sort of relationship right now with Brisbane, Australia. It's more about fostering, you know, collaborative relationships. And so for this trip, it was basically, the purpose of the conference was to support innovation and entrepreneurship in China and in the United States. And I think a question that a lot of people are probably asking is who pays for these trips? So in this case, and as in many cases, whenever there's a trip through China Silicon Valley, the trip is sponsored by the Chinese, by the local Chinese governments. The cities that attend do not pay any, anything. In this case, our city did not pay anything to go on this trip. Our Chamber of Commerce did not pay anything. And before each trip, the organization, China Silicon Valley, contacts the FPPC and obtains an advice letter stating that the trip is in compliance with the regulations, and it's considered an exception to the gift rule, because the trip is for a legislative or governmental purpose, which means that there's no conflict of interest. And in this case, I did obtain that letter before I went on that trip. So just to give you a brief overview of what we did on the trip, and I haven't had a chance to review my photos, but I'd be happy at a future meeting to put together a PowerPoint presentation. So first thing we did was we met with the government people and the elected people in what's called the Wenjiang District. It's one of the outer districts of Chengdu. Chengdu is a very large city. I think something like 13 million people in the entire city, including all the outer districts live there. But Wenjiang is one of the smaller outer lying areas, small for China, but not really that small. And so we met with the government officials there, and we toured one of their developments called a medical city, which was really fascinating because it combines like a hospital where they have patient care with research and development, and startup businesses in the, in the bio, you know, the pharmaceutical field, and the bio field. So that was a really productive meeting because they were very interested in hearing about our biotech businesses, and so they're actually, they had already planned a visit to the Bay Area in late June, and they said that they're interested in visiting our city so, and seeing what businesses we have here that could provide some alignment with their medical city. So we're going to, we're working on setting up a meeting with them in late June to meet with Ultragenics out at Sierra Point and introduce them to the Chinese officials who will be visiting, who can then connect them with the biotech businesses in China. So, you know, we hope that that'll lead to some future collaboration that'll help benefit our local businesses as well as theirs in China. And then after that, we went to what's called the Shindu District. That's in the north part of Chengdu, and we saw this exhibition hall. Every city in China has one of these. It's like their city hall, but it's like their planning department center where they have 3D models of their cities, and they put on these shows basically where they light up parts of the city and they show you how their transportation works, and it's like, it's an incredible presentation. So we got to see that, and we also got to tour, during the main conference, we toured another exhibition hall, an incubator space, and another medical park. And we got to meet the mayor of Chengdu, and at the conference itself, we had a forum where all the mayors were there from different cities around the world, and we all talked about ideas about how we in our cities can encourage innovation and any particularly noteworthy projects. There were other mayors representing the United States there. In fact, the first lady of San Francisco, Anita Lee, was there, as well as some representatives from United Airlines, because they operate the only airline that flies directly to Chengdu from the United States to San Francisco, a direct flight. People were there from Los Angeles, Nashville, Tennessee, Louisville, Kentucky, and also someone representing the New York State Legislature. And then as part of the conference, I also had the opportunity to give one of the keynote speeches. I spoke at an opening ceremony for City University of Hong Kong Chengdu Research Institute, and this was a new institute that's just starting to bring some research over from a university that operates out of Hong Kong. And they asked me to give one of the speeches. There were like three other speakers, and I spoke for a couple hundred people about what we're doing in Brisbane to encourage innovation. I gave examples of, you know, the environmental awards that we've received and what we've done with our climate action plan and things along those lines. And we also had the opportunity to meet with the representatives from that district called Zhuanglu. And it was just really fascinating to see what they're doing in China. In that city, I had been there myself over 10 years ago on a family trip, and I wouldn't even have recognized the city today because it's just grown so much, and the innovation and the transportation is really remarkable. One of the things that's really popular there is a bike sharing program, and we have that here, but they make it even easier where they can just, people can take their phones and scan them onto the bikes. It's through an app, it arranges the payment, and it's become a really popular way for people to get around them. People take bikes there all the time, they're on, throughout the roads. So that was the trip, and the next steps are that we're going to have a meeting in late June. Like I said, we'll be receiving the delegation and showing them our Ultragenics business. And I did inform the council before I attended the trip through the city manager who sent an email in advance, so everyone was aware of the trip before it happened. So I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Yeah, that was good, you know, good information about what you did on the trip and, you know, why you wanted to go, so thank you for that.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I think it's noted that the city didn't pay anything for this, didn't come out of any funds, and it was a unilateral decision on your part to go. You were invited directly, so the council didn't have any decision on that. Like you said, notified us through the city manager.
Right, right. Okay, great. Well, thank you. So moving on, we're next on the consent calendar. We have quite a bit, items A through O.
You know, I'd like to pull item K.
Item which one?
K.
K?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And then, you know, I just wanted to pull item K, just because I thought it was kind of a cool thing, you know, and Chief, if you could just shine some light on this grant to help homeless folks in San Mateo County and how every city is getting this funding source.
Absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll go over just a brief synopsis of the actual staff report. So the California Board of State and Community Corrections was, which was established in 2012. It's an independent statutory agency that provides leadership to adult and juvenile criminal justice systems and administers significant public safety related grant funding. The BSCC's mission is to provide grants to local law enforcement for programs and initiatives intended to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and communities we serve. The BSCC's City Law Enforcement Grant of the Budget Act of 2016 allocated $512,971 to law enforcement agencies within San Mateo County. The associated mandate of this grant is to increase positive outcomes between law enforcement and high-risk populations. Local law enforcement agencies were able to use those funds to supplement some programs such as homeless outreach teams, crisis intervention training, gang resistance, resources for drug-endangered children, outreach to high risks, youth diversion programs, and gang and violence preventative programs. Rather than spend the aforementioned funds as a county, the San Mateo County Police Chiefs decided to disperse these funds equally in the amount of $30,174 to each agency within the county. The Brisbane-San Bruno South City, Burlingame, Colma, Hillsborough, and Broadmore Police Departments have expressed a desire to allocate these funding in a manner that would enhance homeless outreach efforts, I'm sorry, through Life Moves, which is one of the largest and most effective nonprofit organizations committed to ending the cycle of homelessness for families and individuals in San Mateo County and Santa Clara Counties. Their program takes a regional approach to serving unsheltered homeless individuals and families in our community. This one-time funding will expand Life Moves' impact and increase its capacity to more effectively serve the homeless families and individuals living in our community. This additional funding will allow this nonprofit organization, Life Moves, to implement some of the following things. That would, the funding would increase capacity and provide additional outreach services by dedicating a member of their outreach team to serve the agencies I mentioned up above. Life Moves will also begin hiring process with the funding to hire a dedicated staff member that will address those, our agencies listed in above. The outreach workers will meet with law enforcement regularly to identify where homeless individuals and families reside, work to develop a rapport with the homeless citizens, make referrals to primary and behavioral health care, connect unsheltered homeless people to housing resources, and provide access to basic needs such as meals, showers, toiletries, and emergency shelter, to continue to enrich the relationship and collaborative efforts between Life Moves and key law enforcement agencies. Life Moves will provide a rapid response to the communities identified in this proposal regarding homelessness. The HOT team responds to the next business day to develop relationships with those identified unsheltered homeless individuals. They do work to connect unsheltered individuals to important resources and develop therapeutic relationships to work with individualized needs. There is no fiscal impact associated with receipt and allocation of these funds, and staff does recommend that you authorize the receipt and allocation of the share of these funds in the amount of $30,174 to enhance homeless outreach efforts. And we've been using Life Moves recently as we've encountered quite a few homeless individuals in our community, not necessarily inside, but on the outskirts of our community, and they've been really receptive. They've worked, they've been a great asset to the county and to our city itself. They've come out immediately, they've made that connection with individuals, they've been put on their case management, and they really have just, you know, been able to make a difference for these individuals, to get them into a facility, get the medical needs, you know, provide them skills where they can get back out into the working community. So we really feel that Life Moves is a great organization, and we hope that you will approve that funding of that funds to go to Life Moves.
Yeah, thank you for that great report, and yeah, I would make a motion to allocate those funds.
I had a question.
I had a question, okay.
This came up while I was reading the report, and I was just curious why that homeless outreach was chosen as opposed to, you know, the other, the other options.
Well, we, as a, as a group, we were discussing some of the biggest issues that we've been addressing in our, in all the cities within the county, and homelessness came up as one of, one of the biggest concerns and biggest... came up as one of, one of the biggest concerns and biggest issues, especially for us of the adjoining cities like South San Francisco. We've been in contact with, with South San Francisco. We've been noticing that many of the individuals that get, they get pushed out of South San Francisco end up coming over to Brisbane. And then we end up, when we contact them, they end up, and they realize that we're trying to disband their encampment. Then they end up moving back to South City. So, it's this cross-jurisdictional lines that is continuous. And so, we really felt that this was a need that we really needed to address.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
All second.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay.
You guys are done.
So, now we are moving on to old business. Item A, consider introduction of ordinance number 620, changing the year at which city council elections must be held to even-numbered years statewide elections, and shortening the term of office for council members elected in November 2017 and November 2019 by one year. Staff report, please.
Mayor and council, deja vu all over again. We've, we've been down this road a few times since this new legislation went into effect. And the ordinance before you tonight is pursuant to council direction at your last meeting to provide an ordinance that would result in the council members elected in November of 2017 having terms of office of three years to November of 2020. And the terms of office for the two council members elected in November of 2019 would also be reduced by one year to 2022. But thereafter, beginning in 2020 and 2022, council members' terms would be four years, and those elections would be held in the number of, of the even-numbered years. If the council approves this, we will seek approval from the County Board of Supervisors because that has to happen to make it effective. We're anticipating that will not be a problem. And this should be able to go into effect if the, if the ordinance becomes effective so that the terms of office for those elected in November of 2017 would in fact be three years. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do not.
Motion to introduce ordinance 620.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, consider adoption of Resolution 2017-07 to approve changes to the fiscal year 2016-17 budget for the general fund. Staff report.
I don't have any videos, but later, tonight, I have one for the art person, so.
Typo.
Hmm?
Typo.
Typo, typo?
Lots of typos.
Oh, 2006, 206 to 17. Okay.
Eleven-year budget.
It's not even 11 years. It's like, yeah, okay, moving on. General fund, fund balance. So, we had anticipated ending the year this past fiscal year, starting July 1st, with a fund balance of $10,700,000. We actually ended the year with $11,281,187. So, we ended up about $500,000, $600,000 better than we had thought. So, that was a very positive from last year. We budgeted revenues of about $16.3 million this fiscal year when we did this back last year. And we're reprojecting those revenues at about $16.9 million this year. The largest issue for that is the sales tax. We had budgeted $3.4 million. We're now making a re-projection, or I am making a re-projection for $3.9 million. We have received through December of this year, $2.2 million. As you know, we get our sales tax quarterly in reality. So, we're not going to see our March receipts until sometime in June. Then we see our June receipts sometime in September for actual numbers. So, we only have six months worth of data. We have $2.2 million so far. We use Muni Services as our sales tax auditor. They're projecting that we will get $4.3 million based off of past, based off of our past history as well as what we've received so far to date. I'm just being a little bit more conservative than they are. So, we end up, if we end up with that $4.3 million, we'll be $400,000 better than we had thought. General fund, we had a budget of $18.5 million. We're reprojecting it at about $18.5 million as well. There's a whole list of ins and outs that I provided as part of the staff report. And I'll be more happy to respond to any questions you have on that. But it was a very long list to get everything back to where it all belongs. One of the things that has always been an issue when we talk about budgets is our unfunded liability. As you know, PERS recently has gone to a, from a 7.5% discount rate to a 7% discount rate. That has increased our unfunded liability for PERS to $24 million. We just had a actuarial study for our OPEB, our Other Post-Employment Benefits. We are putting money aside for there. We have over $1 million set aside for our OPEB. But because we are so far below our funding for our unfunded liability, what they are using as a discount rate is 3.9%. We're investing it trying to hit 6%. So, we're doing a little bit better than what is the projection. But using a 3.9% discount rate, we have about $11 million of an unfunded liability. So, the question is, how are we going to deal with that? So, one of the things that council has done in this current fiscal year and for next fiscal year is that you've added $100,000 towards PERS for the unfunded liability. You've put $100,000 towards OPEB unfunded liability. And one of the things I did not mention was the $250,000 you have put towards building maintenance rehabilitation. You have a three-year plan. Three more years, you're going to put an extra $250,000 each of those years, was what we had talked about at the time of the budget. Moving to the five-year projections as to how we're doing. This is one of those things that we've, that we brought, I brought to you last year. So, for OPEB, to let you know, we have a $923,000 expenditure in the budget for the next, for the five years' projection. This is much more than we've been paying recently. What this does is cover our normal costs of $384,000 and then also $439,000 to start paying off some of that unfunded liability. And then another $100,000 in addition to that. So, the $823,000 is what's recommended by the actuary that we need to pay. And the $100,000 is the additional funding that council has set aside. For PERS, with their 7% discount rate, they haven't given us the exact numbers yet, but they've given us a formula on how to calculate it. So, our PERS payments in 1718 is going to be $1.9 million. And then, based on a 7% rate of return, which I don't know if they're going to get or not, we'd be paying $2.25 million in 1819, $2.6 million in 1920, $3 million in 2021, and then $3.4 million in 2122. Of this amount, $7.2 million goes towards the unfunded liability. And then, we're also going to put aside an extra $100,000 a year in additional funding to start building up our reserves to help offset some of the future costs as well. So, if we do, if we do both of those, we'll be well on our way to funding what we need to for unfunded liabilities. Other assumptions that I have in the five-year projections is sales tax for 1718 is $4.3 million. I feel very confident with this, with the fact that Muni Services is projecting this year at 4.3 and they're projecting next year at 4.5. So, I'm comfortable with a 4.3, $4.3 million projection for sales tax and then only a 2% a year increase, whereas Muni Services thinks it'll be closer to 3%. That's their number that they're using. Transient occupancy tax grows, grows by 3% a year. Having talked to the, to hotels, that's kind of their projections for what they think they're going to be able to do. I'm assuming the ecology ballot measure passes, that you're putting on the ballot. The salary increases are per contract, that we would transfer $100,000 to capital projects a year. We talked about this last year. We were talking about increasing the amount of money that we are putting towards, asking Kinder Morgan to say in their business license pack, putting some money aside for capital projects. And then, of course, we would use fund balance, or balancing individual years. So, obviously, if we're going to use fund balance to balance in individual years, revenues and expenditures meet. To let you know what the individual years look like, we do have ongoing, expenditures higher than ongoing revenues for each of the five years. So, in fiscal year 1718, we're running about $286,000 of expenditures above revenues. In 1819, $271,000, 18, sorry, 1920, $486,000, 2021, $539,000, 2122, that's $214,000. But as I pointed out, we're making great strides towards paying our unfunded liabilities with all of that. So, much better than we have been doing in previous years. Then again, in addition to that, we have some one-time uses of the fund balance for the PERS, OPEB, and building maintenance. Given all that, we would have a fund balance projection where our fund balance does go slightly, or goes below our required reserves. We're, we'd expect to have required reserves, about $8 million. We're having required reserves, our reserves would be around $6 million, given everything that was happening. You know, one of the questions, of course, is if our sales tax does go according to the Muni Services projections, that would add half a million dollars in that last year because they're projecting about $100,000 more than I am in theirs. If we took out the additional money for PERS and OPEB, you know, again, that would be $200,000 a year. So, we'd have $1 million more in reserves than what we showed in the last chart. So, that gives you the overall picture where we are. We still, you know, I think we're doing great strides to getting to where we need to be with funding our unfunded liabilities. Our revenues are still strong. It's just a matter that we, you know, we still need to make some, look at some of the individual years to, if we need to make adjustments in those years. As we get finer, as we get closer to those years, we might need to fine-tune them to be more balanced.
Yeah, both PERS and OPEB, I mean, we'd have to, we're going to be required to pay those things now or later.
Or later.
Right. And so, yeah, thank you for.
The more that we save now, the less, less.
The less will cost us in the long run.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Stuart.
Yeah, you know, I have some questions. So, you know, we've had quite a long bull market. You know, I mean, of course, you can't predict on, on things that, that happen day to day. But, you know, typically, you know, there are these cycles. This has been an extremely long cycle. Having these types of conversations in the past, around this time, you were expecting that we'd probably start to see maybe a recession starting to show its face. Doesn't appear that that's the case right now, but that is quite a long run. How do you, how do you feel about that?
Obviously, I'm, you know, as a finance person, I'm always concerned about the next recession. One of the things that the city council did a few years ago was put money aside specifically for recession so that we would be able to work through the recession. The other item that the city council did in reserves is they put aside $3.5 million for, in case there's an unanticipated emergency. So, one of the questions, I think, that, you know, I would want to bring back to the Finance and Administrative Subcommittee is to relook at our required reserve requirements. Because a lot of the reserves that we would need to have are really for, probably more for water and sewer repairs than for general fund repairs. So, what we may want to do over time is shift some of those required reserves that we set aside for emergencies and move it more toward, you know, move it towards a recession reserve and then build up our, our emergency reserve in the Water and Sewer Fund. Because that's really where I think the large amount of the costs are going to be for the repairs. If you think about what's going to happen if we have a major earthquake, it's really the water and sewer pipes that are going to be breaking, you know, not the city streets.
Sure.
So, that's why, you know, I think we can work through the reserves. But, you know, if we have, you know, if we have reserves in the range, you know, if we get back up to where we want to be around $8 million in 2021, you know, if we say, you know, three or four million of that is used to cover us through, through a downturn or recession, we would be able to work through the recession and, like we did last time, and really think about what are the, what are our services that we want to protect and protect those services. You know, last time when we went through the recession, the employees went without pay raises for a number of years. They took a 1% pay cut in one of those years. You know, I would think that, you know, we would probably go through the same kind of analysis to see what we can afford in our contracts. As, you know, Clark knows, one of the things that we put into, probably it is urging, we put into our contracts is a recession clause. So, if there is a recession, we can, we can open up our contracts again. And, you know, and the staff has been very positive about that. They recognize that we only use that, that clause when it's important, you know, when it's really an issue for us, not just because there's a recession, but when the recession impacts us. We've done that in the past. So, you know, when you take out, you know, our budget, our contracts call for 3% pay raises for the next couple of years. If there is a recession, you reduce that 3% down to a zero. That is probably, you know, $300,000 or $400,000 in savings, just right there. So, I think we, you know, I think we have enough in reserves to work to be able to make conscious decisions about how we want to deal with it in the future.
Okay. You know, one of the, the savings that, that, that you demonstrated in the staff report was the fees charged by the city attorney. So, I guess we're using the city attorney for less things. Do, you know, it's quite, quite a bit of a difference from what was budgeted, $283,000 to 100, I don't know, was it based on, but, you know, I guess your, your basic services is about 150, maybe it's 125. So, do you foresee that, that being kind of a long-term trend? Or are there things, and this might be something that, that maybe Clay, or, yeah, probably more of a Clay question, where you would use the city attorney in a more robust fashion to, and that, of course, then would increase costs?
I think part of the reason, you know, one of the large savings from the city attorney is, I think, you know, council had the conversation about how do we, how does the city council want to use the city attorney? And how do we want to use the city, city attorney as a organization? And I think some of the changes that you made as a council when it comes to using the city attorney is part of that savings. I think part of that savings is, you know, there's a lot of, the issues that we are facing from a city's general fund perspective are, are not as research-intensive at this point as some of the issues that we were dealing with a couple of years ago. Because there's a lot of research that we were doing on a number of issues that have come to fruition, like the massage ordinance, like, you know, the gun issue that we were dealing with. So, I think there's a lot of...
Smoking ordinance.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of things that was really research-intensive that we were using the city attorney for. Other issues that we use attorney services for, you know, like planning issues, and obviously, the Baylands is a big one. You know, that's being covered by, by the developer at this point.
Reimbursed.
And, you know, we also have money set aside in a different fund, our liability fund, to cover unanticipated lawsuits for us. And we have a few hundred thousand dollars sitting out there for that. So, you know, if we have a lawsuit, it doesn't necessarily have to come out of the general fund city, city attorney's budget. It would come out of our liability that we've been setting aside money for, for unanticipated liabilities.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Stuart.
You know, one of the things that I didn't point out that we've also done that has, that, you know, from a long-term perspective, this will help us, is we are setting aside money every year for our vehicle replacement. That was one of the things that the city council did a number of years ago. They set aside about $1 million to cover our vehicle replacement. So, now we're only, you know, when, you know, when we have a fire truck that needs to get replaced, which is a $400,000, $500,000 item, we're saving for it as, every year. And we're not having that one big year where we have that $600,000, $700,000 equipment cost. You know, this year, we're looking at buying a Vector for the sewer. You know, the cost of the Vector is $400,000 to $500,000. So, instead of having a $400,000 to $500,000 hit from the water fund, utility fund, we're going to be able to use our money that we've set aside in the motor vehicle fund and then have it repaid over time as that Vector gets used. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things I think that the city council has been very diligent about in trying to set up reserves to pay for things that we know are coming. And I think that's one of the things that has helped us through, you know, through some of our budgeting.
God, Stuart, I just realized I was on the council when we bought the last Factor.
They've got about a 20-year lifespan, Clark.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, so I guess that, so now, now you know how long you have to last until you get by the next one.
Yeah.
So, Stuart, this last question, on the back page, page two, staff recommends repaying the general fund, the $540,219 that it lent the utility fund?
Yes. So, you know, and I don't have the staff report right in front of me, but back in, I think it was 2003, 2004, I know it's... I think it was 2003, 2004, I know it's in the staff report and I looked it up for that. The utility fund was running a deficit. It was the years before that the, you know, the city council did not take, there was a number of years where the city was in the midst of trying to determine how much money was needed to adequately fund the water and sewer functions of our city. You know, in 1998, we hired, or 1999, we hired a consultant to go through our water and sewer to determine what the long-term capital needs were, determine what the operating costs were. At that time, the, when I came here in 2001, I think the report was presented, at the time, the report was saying that we needed about a 300% increase in our water and sewer rates. Obviously, the city council and the community was a little concerned with that, so we grew into a rate increase. And as we were growing into that rate increase, we didn't have, we weren't fully funding our water and sewer function. So the city loaned, the general fund loaned the water and sewer, the $540,000. The water, you know, Water and Sewer Fund, the utility fund, is fully funded at this point. You know, there's questions from a long-term perspective when you start talking about capital projects, and the city council has a plan to deal with capital projects going forward. The other issue that the infrastructure subcommittee has talked about is a drought rate and not, so when there is a drought, long answer to a short question, I apologize for that. But when there's a drought, one of the things that happens is that we, our revenues get reduced because we reduce the amount of landscape water that is used, and landscape water is our most expensive water that we sell. So, you know, one of the things that the infrastructure subcommittee talked about and I'll be bringing back at a future meeting is to set up a drought reserve where we would increase our rate to produce $106,000 a year because what we found is during the drought, we lost about $500,000 in revenues is what we got decreased. So we had set aside money during the good years, as we do with all of our, you know, all of our known expenses and say, yeah, let's set money aside so we don't have to in a bad drought year, increase the rates. So what we did was back in 2000, whatever, we loaned this, the utility fund money we just have yet to pay it back. What we've been doing is charging it interest, but, you know, the utility fund does have enough cash at this point that it should just pay the general fund back.
And that's part of the overall recommendation that's been proposed tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2017-07 to approve, excuse me, changes to FY 2016-17 budget for a general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion, resolution passes.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item B under new business, consider adoption of the following resolutions regarding the pay scales for city employees. Number one, resolution number 2017-14 regarding the pay scale for confidential employees group. Do I have to read all of these? Okay. Number two, resolution number 2017-15 regarding the pay scale for confidential management employees group. Number three, resolution number 2017-16 regarding the pay scale for executive management employees group. Number four, resolution number 2017-17 regarding the pay scale for International Association of Firefighters, Local 2400 AFL-CIO. Number five, resolution number 2017-18 regarding the pay scale for general employees association. Number six, resolution number 2017-19 regarding the pay scale for hourly pay scale. Number seven, resolution number 2017-20 regarding the pay scale for mid-management professional employees group. Number eight, resolution number 2017-21 regarding the pay scale for the police chief. Number nine, resolution number 2017-22 regarding the pay scale for the police commander. Resolution number 10, resolution number 2017-23 regarding the pay scale for Brisbane Police Officers Associations. Number 11, resolution number 2017-24 regarding the pay scale for all employees' master pay schedule. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you mentioned, we have before you several resolutions to approve in regard to adopting pay schedules for fiscal year 2017, 2018. As you'll recall, back in 2016, the city reached agreement with all the employee bargaining groups outlining the wages, benefits, and working conditions for each respective group. Staff has posted both approved labor agreements and salary information on the city's website to provide, to provide the public with access to this information on a couple of different areas on the website. In November, on November 4, 2016, CalPERS issued a circular letter clarifying that pay schedules must comply with Government Code Section 200636 and CCR Section 570.5. There are several requirements in order for the city to comply with those codes, some of which include making sure that they, that the pay scales have been duly adopted, approved and adopted by the governing body, identifying clearly the position tile for every employee position, showing the pay rates for each identified position, which may be stated in different range, different types, whether as a range or multiple amounts within a range, the time base, and several other requirements. CalPERS also noted in their circular letter that if an agency does not meet these requirements, CalPERS may determine an amount that may be considered as the pay rate. So while the city has regularly posted labor agreements and has updated pay schedule for each bargaining group on our website regularly with the position, pay rate, time base, and effective date, the city has not posted a master pay schedule that combines all of the pay, pay schedules together, including the council member and commissioner pay together in one document. To avoid possible issues going forward, staff is presenting, along with the regular pay schedules for each bargaining group and for the hourly group, we're presenting also a pay, a master pay schedule for the upcoming fiscal year that combines everything together. Certain updates to the pay schedules that have been approved through the collective bargaining process that I'd like to highlight are as follows. For the city manager, the city manager position will receive a 3% pay increase effective with the first full payroll period in November 2017. That new pay rate will be $112.53 per hour. For the police chief, the chief will also receive a 3% increase, and that top step for that pay rate will be $99.37 per hour. For executive management group, the pay schedule will also reflect a 3% pay increase effective with the first full payroll in July 2017. Current filled positions in that group and their respective top step pay rates include the city clerk at $54.34 per hour, the community development director at $87.73 per hour, the public works director, city engineer, at $102.70 per hour. Under confidential management employees, that pay schedule will also reflect a 3% pay increase effective with the first full payroll in July 2017. The current filled position in this group and the respective top step pay rate for the administrative services director is $90.71 per hour. The rest of the follow, the rest of the bargaining groups will also receive a 3% pay increase effective with the first full payroll period in July. The police commander, along with that 3% increase in July, also negotiated a 3% increase effective with the first full payroll period in January 2018. And the police officers association will receive a 3.5% pay increase effective with the first full payroll period in July. While those, those groups are agreed upon pay increases with collective bargaining, historically, the city council has also approved a pay increase for the hourly unrepresented employees that mirror the pay increases of the represented bargaining groups. In order to continue this practice, staff is recommending that the council, at the same time as they approve these, also approve a 3% increase to the pay schedule for the hourly employees effective the first full pay period of July to ensure that the hourly employees are compensated appropriately and kept in line with their fellow employees. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approving all of these pay schedules.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have none.
I did have a question on the unrepresented, unrepresented hourly employees. I would, I see that we have several positions that are under $15 an hour, which seems that I would like to see the council try to go to a living wage for our employees, and I would like to see some of our lower-tiered employees have the opportunity. I know a lot of them are not guaranteed or not allowed 40 hours a week so that they aren't accruing other benefits, and I would like to see that we try to bring as many employees as we can into the living wage realm, align, along with what the county is, is sort of looking at. And I don't know how we can address that here or in this document, but I would like to, as a council, do that.
So Terry.
Coincidentally, we will be, we will be bringing back an item to you at your next meeting on evaluating the minimum wage and doing something a little bit more aggressive in Brisbane than is currently required by the state law, looking specifically at the city of San Mateo. But the, anyway, the Economic Development Director, Mitch Bull, has been working on this, and will bring a report to you at that time. That would also obviously impact our own city employees, and if it's the council's pleasure, you know, we will, can certainly look at that issue internally, kind of on a separate track, and report back to you at a future meeting.
I would like to see something separate because I don't think that, I think it's smarter for the council if really the, one of the big desires is to see our personal employees and our staff have a pay increase versus, in order to do that, you know, getting every business in the city to, to give a raise. So I think, it sounds like where Terry's coming from is specifically our employees, so I'd like to see those be separated if, if the intention was to have something that would encompass all of the businesses within our city.
We can do both.
Okay, great.
And that'll be on the next agenda?
The issue that's coming forward from the, from the Economic Development Director will be on your next agenda. I'll talk with staff and we'll get back to you in terms of how quickly we can get back to you with regards to the issue with regards to our employees, but if there's a sense of wanting to do that sooner than later, then we'll certainly work to do that.
I would, I personally would like, charity begins at home, and I think that before we ask all the businesses in town to adopt some sort of limit, living wage, I think that we certainly could look at some of our, our entry level and some of our positions that aren't so entry level, people we rely on that are lower paid and, and don't have the opportunity to have a full 40-hours week, and I think that we should really look at those members of our staff as a separate issue, as I would like to see that as a separate issue.
Okay, so I'd suggest then when we consider the living wage issue, like for, you know, citywide, that maybe you can put together some information on how that impacts our city employees, like, you know, how many positions would be benefiting from that.
Yeah, I mean, we will, and I think that there's, we, well, I want to work with staff, obviously, in terms of our own employees, but, you know, there, there are various issues that go along with that, but I certainly get a sense of the council wanting to look at that issue and, and do something more aggressively with regards to our own employees, so we'll, we'll kind of separate-track that and bring that back to you soon.
Yeah, I, in the non-governmental field, if you're looking at a 3% raise when you're making $10 an hour, it's a much different change than if you're making $100 an hour, what 3% means to you. And so I think that looking at some of the pay scales we have for our hourly, non-full-time employees, I just would like to be able to make some exceptions or bring some of those scales up to where we have a good opportunity to retain the level of employees that we have. I understand some are entry-level, some are, you know, kids with their first summer job, some of those things have their own separate issues and aren't expecting to, you know, be a stepping stone in, in their city careers or their, their lifelong careers, but I would like to look at that or have it looked at.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do, Madam Mayor. Just, just to ask some clarification, and I probably should ask this earlier for the meeting, just in using the community development director as an example, so the.
What page are you on?
It's, she doesn't have a page number, but it's, I guess.
What resolution number is it?
It's resolution number 2017-17. So, you know, just the different steps, Maria. So step E, you know, is the recommended amount, that would be the 3% pay increase for the community development director?
Actually, the 3% is across the board for all the steps in the pay scale.
Okay, so the, so, okay, so in, in the bullet points, it said, community development director at $87.73 per hour, and that's the step E.
Right, that's the top step, step E.
That's the top, okay, so tell me the different steps. So step A is, where are we in step A?
So generally, when people come on board, we start, most employees at step A as the starting salary. Each step has a 5% differential between them. Generally, for our, the way our compensation plan works is generally people are set up so that after their six-month performance evaluation, they're eligible with the satisfactorily performance evaluation to move to step B, and then they can move through the rest of the steps annually thereafter based upon a satisfactory job description. So, so usually, most people will get to step E within about three and a half years if everything progresses properly.
Okay, good, yeah, thank you for providing that clarification because it, yeah, it's not described in here, but that, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Anything else?
Got a question for a city attorney. Michael, would a motion for this, would an appropriate motion be approval of resolution number 2017-14 through 2017-24?
Correct. I don't think you have to do each resolution separately. I think Maria has read into the record what CalPERS is requesting happened, so resolution can be done all in one fell swoop.
That's my motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the resolutions pass. Okay, moving on to item C, consider adoption of resolution 2017-26, calling for an election increase to the business license tax recycling establishments. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the city has a business license tax which it imposes on recycling establishments generally. Those are defined as businesses who collect, sort, cleanse, treat, process, or reconstitute waste or other discarded materials for the purpose of reuse in an altered form. For those recycling establishments that recycle 100,000 or more tons of material any, during any single year, the tax could be up to $3 million, subject to certain adjustments. Currently, only, only recology recycles that threshold amount within the city. Over the past three years, the council has imposed a tax on recology in the amount of $2,100,000. This year, staff would recommending that tax be increased to $2,768,000. But in order to generate more revenue for the city, as recology recycles more materials, it is likely that the $3 million threshold would be exceeded, and so staff is recommending that that $3 million threshold be increased to $4 million. Because this is a tax for general municipal purposes, under Proposition 218, any increase would have to be set, approved by a majority of the voters in the community. And so therefore, we are requesting that if council would like to see this business tax for these recycling establishments who recycle more than 100,000 or more tons each calendar year, increase from $3 million to $4 million, that this resolution be adopted and placed before the voters in November of 2017. We also would ask that if the council's going to do this, if the council would want to consider appointing a council committee to write the argument for the passage of the ballot measure, and then if there is an argument against the measure, that there be a separate council committee to write the rebuttal argument. Councils do this in a number of different ways. Some councils will have all five council members sign the argument. Some councils will say, let's just have a council committee sign. Some councils will say, let's just have a council committee sign, and that council committee can then find three members of the community to also sign. You can have up to five signatures on a, an argument for or against, or, and five signatures on the rebuttal. So just kind of throwing out some ideas in terms of what the council might want to do in terms of submitting or drafting the arguments and who should sign. So it's kind of two separate issues. Number one, does the council want to put this on the ballot for the member? And then if so, does the council want to come up with this committee concept to write the argument for, and then a rebuttal argument in case there's an argument against? Any questions on either of those two issues? I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Questions?
None on those two issues.
No questions on it, no. We discussed it in subcommittee, although we did not really discuss the options of, of the language for the ballot measure or the signatory. So that, we really didn't discuss in that.
Okay. Who's on that subcommittee?
Clark and I.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
You know, just, I do have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor. So Clay, if you could just provide an update in some of the discussions that you've had with, with recology and, and also with the city of San Francisco, because they, they need to increase their rates in order to, or how does that all, all work?
I think I've reported in the past that the, the conversation is, is as much with the city and county of San Francisco as it is with the particular company, recology, because it's a pass-through, and it's basically captured in their rates, which San Francisco has to approve. My understanding is they just went through a rate increase and incorporated the dollar amount that we're looking at for the next three years. And then, so we've got that in place. I had a separate and distinct conversation with them today about the status of their project, and they will be drafting a letter to present to the city council, and also probably make a presentation during one of your Baylands hearings in terms of the status of, of moving forward with their project, which they are interested in doing over the long term. They, I think, ultimately came into some sticker shock with regards to the cost of what they were, were looking at, so that's why it's kind of slowed down. But, I mean, those are really two different issues, their development and then this, this fee. But we do meet with them annually to review the, the fee and discuss, discuss the, you know, long-term implementation. And we've worked, frankly, with San Francisco kind of hand in glove in terms of, you know, the, the fee, moving the fee dollar amount up, getting it into the rate structure. They have some desires in terms of keeping it at a, at a certain percentage of the overall company's rate structure. But those are conversations that, you know, I'm sure we will continue to have over the next several years as, as both the, you know, we look at increasing the fee and, and they look at their long-term business plan in Brisbane.
Got it. All right. Thank you for that update, Clark.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone who, from the public who'd like to speak on this?
Yeah. Consider adoption of resolution number 2017-26, calling for an election increase to business license tax in recycling establishments.
I do have one other question, Clark, and I'll second that. How did we do the signatures for the ballot the last time? And I, and as I asked, I just, you know, I would recommend just doing the same, if that's okay with council, or we did the last time, if it was five council members.
We're thinking the council members signed it, but I guess we can research that.
I mean, that seems to be my recollection.
Recollection, yeah.
So, I mean, if, yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Whatever.
That'd be part of your motion, Clark.
Yes.
To have all five council members sign, both the argument for and the rebuttal?
Yeah.
That's a response. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And just one question. Did you want this, do you want feedback from us now on whether to have the election in November and whether to have the subcommittee draft that argument, or have all five council members? Or did you need direction on that from us at this point?
Well, if all five were going to draft it, then we'd have to have a meeting to do that, so it would probably be better to have a, a committee of council members draft it and then have the council members come in and sign it.
That's fine. And can that, can the existing subcommittee draft both of the arguments? Because you had suggested that sometimes it's a different group.
Yeah. I think, it would, you don't have to have a separate committee. It was just an idea that if, if, if you thought it would, it would appeal better to have two council members plus three committee members on the argument for, and two different council members on the rebuttal. But you can have all five of you sign it and have the same two council members draft the argument for and rebuttal if necessary.
Okay. And would you be assisting them with drafting the arguments? Or is that something they'd come up with?
You know, you have to little, it's a little squirrely in terms of having staff's involvement with it, but we would certainly provide some oversight.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. All right. Moving on to very exciting part of our agenda, item D, consider recommending artists for the public art installation at the new Brisbane library.
I have a question on how long you expect this item to be and what kind of discussion, just so we could maybe take a five-minute break and.
I don't anticipate it being long, but if you want to take a break.
Okay. I just don't know if we, we don't have very many public in the audience, but I know that.
Well, we sort of talked about it last time, so I, I think it can be pretty quick.
Okay.
A few minutes.
I had, like, presentations.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I mean, we've got.
Then let's just take a break.
I got, like, a video and I'm going to do a show and tell of what.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Let's, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Five-minute break.[1769.33]